... United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the order of roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Jeff Turner.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Legend.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? Additionals?
Uh, shouldn't be anything additional from staff.
You sure? There's only like ten or twelve items on there. Throw in a few more.
All move to approve. We have motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Home in favor say aye. Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of regularly meeting of October eighth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Takes us to financing budget. You got the accounts payable listing with the additional listing there in front of you? If you have any questions, you can ask. Finance Director Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us right into motions of general business, and the first thing under motions of general business tonight is SYBA gambling permit. Circle Youth Basketball Association is seeking approval to conduct gambling activity. Pull tabs at the Down Under Bar and Grill, one fifteen South Main Street. As per state statute, the city council must approve the license application prior to submitting to the Minnesota Gambling Control Board. Okay, the actual request will be to either approve or deny Resolution two thousand nineteen dash, or Resolution approving the Circle Youth Basketball Association's request for a charitable gambling license at the Down Under Bar and Grill. I'm gonna give, it's not really a public hearing, but I'm gonna give everybody, both groups an opportunity here, so step right up, Mr. Thea Bolden.
Thank you very much, Board. Appreciate your time in this. So, my name is Bernie Thea Bolden, President of Circle Youth Basketball Association. For those that don't know, our Youth Basketball Association and our entire goal with our fundraising is to get back to kids and get back to the community. Last year, registration fees, we took in about twenty thousand dollars, but we paid out nearly fifty-five thousand dollars in tournament fees, uniforms, insurance, and gym fees. Those are up significantly for us, as you can see, we pay out a lot more than we bring in. A lot of people here tonight did a great job of fundraising for the, for the kids. In the last four years, we give out a number of scholarships to kids that cannot afford to play basketball. We've also donated over seventeen thousand dollars worth of equipment back to the school and to the basketball program at the school. We've talked about, and we're almost at the point to come to the city council about a year ago, when Jimmy John talked to him, went out on the Fourth of July, before trying to do some partner improvement, things centered around basketball courts and those types of things. With our increased fees, we haven't been able to, to do that, but this license would allow us to create more revenue, to be able to start having those conversations again, as well as better cover our costs that we have right now. The other thing we do with our tournaments in town, our tournament, just our one tournament last year, we had on sixty teams, and you do the math of kids, parents, fans, that brings thousands of people into town, into the businesses, and, and we feel we do a good job with that and supporting local businesses that way as well. In the past, we've had temporary raffle licenses through the state that have been approved by the city for single raffles. So some of the things we'd like to do with this gambling license are raffles, meat raffles, things like that. We do some different things at our golf tournament that we host in, in the summer, as well as we have been talks with, with the Down Under, with pull tabs. We have not signed anything with them, don't have any sort of agreement with them at this point, but we are requesting permission from the city to have a gambling premises within the city limits.
Questions at table? Some discussion here? Do you have any questions for us, SBYA?
How much would you be hoping to make enough to cover costs?
We, we don't have a great way of looking at what the revenue would be off of that. The best thing we can do is kind of benchmark with other smaller organizations, so I don't know if we have a good number, I thought you wanted to say a number. You know, we, we pay out thirty-five below last year, we paid out thirty-five thousand dollars more than we brought in, so we're hoping to cover a large majority of that.
Does this license have to be renewed every year, or how's this, what, how's the, I don't, I, I'll be honest and tell you, I don't know how pull tab license works with the gambling part of it.
Yes, it has to be renewed every year.
Renewed every year. Now, did, I guess the other question I had, you say you, you approached Down Under, or this business approached you, or has any other business approached you folks, or anything like that?
We approached Down Under, and we started talking about this about a, a year ago, and we approach them in a way that we would provide work to help sell the tickets, because they're not able to sell tickets down the bar, just work mode wise with all of their staff. So our organization, we end up circumnailing selling as well.
There won't be machines then, or be this? There will be machines.
No machines.
No machines.
At least not this, to start with.
Okay. Jeremiah?
So I'm looking at the resolution here, and it says that we're waiving the grace period.
Yeah, that's typical. We've done that with, when the fire department anybody who first starts up. When they have to be renewed now, it puts here early, it used to be February, in two years, they would have to go before council, and we'd raise, we'd waive the grace period. But now that's, doesn't have to happen, they just automatically can renew.
Okay.
Well, I can honestly say that when I saw this on the agenda, I thought it was a no-brainer, and I'm proving that I can't determine when there's gonna be any divisiveness on any issues in the city anymore, 'cause we spent hours on trees, and I don't think that's done yet, and I certainly didn't think having a charitable gambling place added to places not selling them right now would even catch wind of anything, but clearly, from this afternoon, there's opposition. So I, quite frankly, would rather hear what their arguments are before I really even offer my opinion and what I think, 'cause I haven't heard yet.
That's fair enough. Anything else for Bernie, what is up there? Brett?
The only thing in response to you is, you know, we've been, we have a group of people who worked really hard for this organization, and we came up with this, and us too, you know, we didn't know that there would be any opposition, or this would be contentious at all as we came forward.
All right, I'm gonna give, Vance, are you speaking, or?
Yeah.
Give a partner an opportunity to step up.
Great, I appreciate the opportunity to throw up just talk for a few minutes. Just give you a little bit of history on the Sturville Fire Department Relief Association charitable gambling. Over the last twenty years, we've given approximately a million dollars back to the community in either scholarships to seniors, or to tax relief in purchasing apparatus and fire department equipment. In addition to that, for Summer Fest, we bought approximately ten thousand dollars' worth of equipment that allows us to shoot the fireworks off more safely than we used to when we took over that event, and then our annual contribution to the fireworks for the community is thirty thousand. So everything the Fire Department Relief Association does to charitable gambling goes back to the community as a whole, so it doesn't go to one specific group of the community, but to the whole, because it's going to Summer Fest, and then also to buy fire department equipment and apparatus, so it's tax relief for that. Just a little bit of background, so we have a number of new council members on board. Historically, the city has had a policy, or at least a practice, not allowing other charitable gambling programs into the city of Sturville, just because we're such a small market. You know, bringing in additional charitable gambling will reduce the effectiveness and ability for the charitable association through the fire department to develop funds that go both through the seniors for scholarships, and also tax relief to the community as a whole. So, once again, as a, as a group, we just want to kind of express our concern about allowing another charitable gambling activity in town. I don't think they have any malice by any means, but it is a very small market, a very limited number of people that are playing, and we think that our program goes to the community as a whole, and not to one specific section of the community.
Does any part of your program go to any of the youth programs such as this?
It does not. So we do have a number, we, a number of years ago, we came up with a policy on how we donate money. So the only youth group that I'm aware that we do give funds to is the bowling league. The bowling league is associated with the bowling alley. When Marty and them owned the bowling alley, they were very supportive of the fire departments, and we want to make sure, something that they were very passionate about, we also, we support that group. We do have a policy where people can ask to be funded, or to receive some funds to charitable gambling. We have a policy on what we give out, and then out, we give out every year.
No, I, I've been approached by a couple of fire members, and that's, I greatly appreciate it, because I support the fire department greatly, as I support SBYA to the last report. Not so much SBYA, but youth activities through donations and time, and I'll call it talent. Some people wouldn't agree. But when this gentleman's agreement, as we'll call it, was drawn up amongst past councils that I wasn't involved with, can I just ask why maybe it wasn't ever put on paper?
I was not in a leadership role at the time, but Greg House, who was a council member at the time, could probably speak more correctly to that.
Could you just give me an idea, Greg, why at the time it wasn't? 'Cause, now just a sec, let me clarify that. No, stand up. I also understand that, I truly understand, I remember some of that myself, but when this was agreed to, it was also to keep outside organizations, such as Dover and other places, from coming in. I don't think your intention at the time, I could be wrong, was, perhaps you never thought there would be a certain organization wanting to, am I correct in that?
That's not what I remember.
Okay. I, I don't know, 'cause I wasn't there, that's why I'm asking you.
Greg House, lifelong citizen of the community here, been on the fire department, first responder forty-two years, sat on that side of the table for eight years, so know a little bit about the formality. From what I remember, I also made a phone call to Barb Newbauer, 'cause she was involved at that time, none of you were, were on it, knew that, so I did talk with Barb this afternoon, she allowed me to use her name, and she come up with the same thought that I thought as well, that when the circle fire department went into this, that we would not have anybody else in the community, whether it be outside, or anybody locally, to protect the city fire department, as far as the funds which we donate back in multiple ways to help on the tax roll, with the money that we have raised over the last twenty years, so.
Greatly appreciate it, 'cause it saves us from raising the levy up that much more and everything else.
Correct.
Understand. I was just wondering what the, kind of the intention was at the time, you know?
I do think there are minutes that reflect that. I personally would have to go back and find that information. Barb thought the same thing, that there is, on record of that, whether it's the motions that were brought, or the record that was brought, but she, that was in her best of her knowledge, she thought there wasn't.
We did a little digging, we perhaps didn't dig far enough, or whatever, but we did do some checking, so perhaps we need to dig a little further. I, I, nobody at this table wants to harm either group. We, your most greatly appreciated in this community, greatly, greatly appreciated. Matter of fact, I hope I never need you guys. That's how much I appreciate you, but I mean, you're there when I do. As far as the SBYA, they're appreciated, they helped the youth in this community too. Now, I want a little discussion, questions up here too. Go right to it, anyone you want to.
I guess if you guys talked to each other about working out an agreement between the two groups to make something happen?
The first that I was aware of their motion to do that was this weekend, so I should be counted.
So there has been some talk towards?
Has not, no, I was not aware of it.
Okay, okay, okay. I just, I get it here, Ted. All right.
Well, I'm gonna blurb mine out then, if you guys.
You blurb it out, I want to say.
Like always. So I've got mixed feelings on this, clearly, I think I already mentioned that, but number one, it sounds crazy to me that a government would step in and protect a charity because it gives the government that money. That's dirt, that's just foggy and, and hazy. Number two, from what I've heard, the big concern, 'cause right now, you guys have been able to make the fantastic donations that you guys have been able to make, without selling any pull tabs at the Down Under. I heard the major concern is that there'd be fear that if they're given a license, that they may grow, and they, they might be able to push you out of the bowling alley. I mean, that's, I get that. I get the concern. The Police Benevolation Association, which I'm a member of, has gambling licenses, and ours is at that will of the owner. You know, there's no protections, there's no nothing saying that we're guaranteed anything. It's up to us to work a good deal out with the owner, provide good service, and keep them happy, which clearly, you guys don't have any problem with that, because you guys run probably the best show of pull tabs, and I'm a pretty good connoisseur of pull tabs. You guys run the best show that I see. You guys are in there, take good care of it, and now you added games, it's crazy. So I, I don't see that you necessarily be financially harmed. I personally, I'd love to see some sort of agreement that they would say they just want to stick to the Down Under and stay out of your guys' stuff, but I do agree that there's potential, it's potential for a little bit of lost revenue perhaps, if people do play at, at Down Under. I don't really think it would be a real big loss to you, but, but I have to admit that that's, that is a potential concern, so. I'm, I'm split on the thing, I still, I, I feel like both charities deserve it, and that I think a lot of good can happen out of both of these, and I'm leaning that way. That's just where I'm at, I guess, I, I don't, I don't want to be arguing over it.
Brett?
I think that this hasn't come up over the last twenty years, because I think there was some sort of agreement. Why is it this hap, why did this happen two years ago, three years ago, four years ago with, with the volleyball boosters, or any other booster club? Because I think they, it was never, there has been an agreement for years that protected the assets of the city and the fire department.
Jeremiah?
Yeah, for me, as, as far as this goes, as long as it's, they're adding pull tabs to a place that doesn't currently have them, they're not replacing them.
We would, we put pull tabs in there, we work with the owner, pull tabs in there.
We've heard there.
Where?
We've been thinking for how long? We tried, we talked to the borrower about going in there, they've chosen not to have them in there. It's not that we have not asked to go in there. There's nowhere in town that we haven't, that we've chosen not to go into. They want pull tabs that is, that is stable, and capable of functioning appropriately, we would definitely do a pull tab in there. Without, I still have to talk to the gambling manager to make sure, but we have not turned down pull tabs in there.
So you're saying it was a business choice, they chose not to have them in there?
Marty will speak more to it, I guess. So, they, they did not want to impede their, their business to do that. We put machines in, when we put machines in, they would not honor the tickets that were pulled up with winners, 'cause it interfered with their business practice, which is totally fine, but we would have to pull out, because we had people that were playing our, our tickets unable to redeem their winners, just because the borrower's busy, and the owner chose not to take the time to redeem those.
Now, I've been, I've heard, I've talked, I've had discussions with some of you guys, that many of the communities in the area have different ideas of how to do their things. Some, some require a certain amount we donated back to the city, some require a certain amount for this or that. I haven't had time to look into it, 'cause I did not realize it was gonna become quite the issue it is either, which I understand, I mean, I understand why. Unless somebody else up there differently, or somebody out there feels differently. I would like a little more time to research the minutes, as Greg has pointed out, he feels there is something. I would like to make certain there's, is or isn't. That would simplify a whole lot of stuff, yes. I'd also like a little time to research some of these other communities to see how they do it. I'm gonna propose, I'm gonna make the motion at the table, but I'm gonna have to have a second on that.
Just out of curiosity, do we know how the Legion, the Legion's in town, and they have a gambling license?
The Legion is always, from what I've been told, I'm not gonna touch the Legion, I'll tell you that. If you wanna go after the Legion.
No, no, we're just wondering, they had to come to the city council to get their license.
I'm sure they did.
So, well, my, my question is, is how they were allowed to get it if the fire department was ready?
I don't think the fire department even wanted to touch the Legion.
I think the Legion was, wasn't the Legion probably doing it before the fire department, weren't they?
I believe they would. The Legion does stay within the Legion, and to be honest with you, they do support the fire department, they bought AEDs for us, they bought flag poles, they bought a lot of equipment for us, so even a lot of their proceeds go back to their organization to support veterans, and also to the community as a public safety through the fire department. And scholarships, there's scholarships too.
So I've made a motion, I don't know, I'll call for a second, a second time.
Second, I'll second that.
Any other discussions or questions? The only reason I'm doing this for all of your sake, is I want to get to a fair and equitable answer for everybody. I could just well bring it to a bolt, and somebody's gonna walk away very unhappy tonight. You may still, somebody's still gonna may end up unhappy, but I would like just a little more time, 'cause I have to agree with Craig, I didn't realize, honestly, I didn't realize it'd become quite the issue it became. So I would motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's tabled, we'll give a little time to check in to this. Thank you. Anybody that wants to stay for the rest of the funding, welcome to stay. Next motion, or item under general business, will be Winterfest two thousand nineteen. The city has received an outdoor event permit application from the Chamber of Commerce for Winterfest two thousand nineteen. Megan Romans will be presenting the events for a fun-filled family night at the park. Included in the events will be a fun run at the middle school parking lot, the Florence Park, standstill parade followed by the fireworks. During the evening, the bonfire will be lit, and you can enjoy chili and hot chocolate. Approval should also include, we will be shutting down Lake Shore Drive Northwest with temporary shutdown of Sixth Avenue Southwest, Second Street Northwest, and Third Avenue Northwest. Council action requested here in a little bit will be to approve the outdoor event. You're on.
Well, you said it all. We appreciate your support in the past, and we're gonna be keeping up with the plan that we've had the past two years, as long as Mother Nature agrees with us, but exactly what we need is what you said, we love having that street blocked off so that we can have our standstill parade for a pretty short-lived evening, and also hoping for some help from Sean Duffin, team of bonfire builders and Christmas tree lighters, but those are the things that we are hoping for this year.
Well, what time are we gonna start this this year?
So four, four P.M.
Okay.
On Lake Shore Drive there, and then we are usually done well before eight thirty-eight.
The date?
The date is Saturday, December seventh.
Saturday, December seventh. I guess that isn't in there, is it? What are you hoping for, snow or rain?
Not as much as last year, we don't want to be too picky, but yeah, we'll take what we get.
And also not down to thirty-five below what you were wanting.
Yes.
Questions from any, anybody?
I'll move to approve.
Ooh, we have motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's a lot easier with pull tabs. Megan, you have my email?
I'll.
Or my contact?
I'll stick to your phone.
Yeah, okay. So just let us know when it gets close, what you need.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Thanks.
You're welcome to stay too, if you want. See ya.
Bye.
Next item, Southern Hills Expansion EAW Review Response. As you are aware, the environmental assessment worksheet review comment period was from September second to October ninth. During the review, five agency comments were received, twenty-one residents also provided comments through email and social media to Administrator Schimmel. It was noted that the majority of the comments were personal commentary and did not specifically reference the EAW or topics discussed in the EAW. Excuse me. Derek Duschel, did I get that right?
Close it out.
Good, thank you. SEAC Senior Biologist will be in attendance to present the report. After the presentation, the next step will be to consider a resolution making a negative, making a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the proposed development. We're gonna let you take it from there.
Very good, thank you. As you stated, succinctly, yes, we reported today to present the findings of fact and the response to comments for the environmental assessment worksheet. It was approved by a council on, on August twenty-seventh as complete. It was published in the EQB monitor for a thirty-day comment period from September ninth through October ninth. As you stated, we received five agency comments, we also had twenty-one resident comments within that timeframe. It's unclear if they were necessarily intended as part of the EAW, but we've received them and have them included in the administrative record. The comments that we received from the agencies were from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, Department of Transportation, Department of Natural Resources, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the State Archaeological Office. The comments that we see from the agencies, which are a little bit more substantial, were clarifications on the permits required, clarification on the design flow and capacity of the wastewater treatment facility, clarification on stormwater management, which is a potential one for the developer, make sure they're meeting infiltration and management requirements. There was a question on noise related to the proximity of I-90, which is really not, that's a known feature, that's not necessarily something that's a surprise. There were several questions related to the traffic study, which were presented both from residents and identified for M.D., there was an error in that study related to shared turn lanes. That's one we would request that the applicant does revise, to make sure that their assertion that there's no necessary changes for any of the signals or traffic patterns is accurate. That's one error that we do ask to be corrected. A note on water appropriation permitted proximity of fence, which is really more of a, an FYI from the DNR, and then from SHPO and their archaeological office is a request to do an ARC review. They've asked for a phase one, the applicant's initial cultural resource review and recommended it, they're just confirming that, and what else would be recommended, which would be something that you would likely second. It's a component of a potential Army Corps of Engineers permit that they need, so it's probably behooves them to do it. At this point, the comments have been responded to, and you've provided a copy. The process asks, going forward, to reach a decision on whether or not you believe the environmental review process is complete, in which case is the negative declaration, so you're saying no further action needed, it's kind of a clumsy phrase, but that's the legal definition, or if you think that there's substantial information lacking, missing, or to be discovered, in which case you would recommend proceeding to a full environmental impact statement. Before you today is a draft resolution, it's been prepared, on the presumption that you would support the negative declaration, essentially ending the environmental review process, specific to the state requirements. On the presumption, again, that you would be passing that resolution, we would notify the EQB and all of the respondents, provide a copy of the findings as you have today, unless you've got any comments on, or any changes on that, and that would terminate the environmental review process and open up any decision-making or review for any other components of the project going forward.
Do you folks here concerned with this? Is that where you're here? Well, I'm just gonna clarify one thing before we go any further, this is, no matter what we do, this is not a permit or permission to proceed, just so you understand that we're not, I don't want you going back home and telling everybody that we gave them permission tonight to start building. That's not what this is, just so it's clear. I'm gonna defer to our engineers, do you see any reason that we need to not give a negative?
No, I see that our environmental review is completed at this point.
If we do that negative declaration though, we can still require these five other recommendations that are in here?
Yep, they're independent, some of them are, are recommendations, some of them are things that you would want them to complete accurately, like the traffic study for.
Traffic, you would want that straightened out, that.
Turn lane deal.
Whatever, when you're talking about archaeological finding, that, I don't know what, reading into the.
Yep, that's more of a state-level requirement.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sure it's something they need on that, just by what the way right here, the Chinese to me, so.
So, one thing this does is it gives us a list of things that they need to do before they get a, the okay to start building. So this just clarifies the permits and the steps they need to take before they can start going on anything.
Beyond the ones the charity are aware of.
Right. Any other questions, any discussion? Bill?
Biggest thing staff took a look at because of the environmental issues was water capacity, that that wouldn't be affected in any dramatic way. Our sewer wastewater plant, that that wouldn't be affected. We did look at the traffic, obviously Twentieth and Eleventh is built as an arterial-type street. Now, I think most staff and citizens will say there are some sections that probably could use some attention, especially closer to the industrial end, and we'll just have to work that into our rotation, but the street itself is made for those bigger volumes of traffic. And then the last thing Derek did point out, if the proposal to expand Southern Hills goes forward, one of the big things we'll be watching for is the storm drainage and storm sewer-type issues, or how that will be addressed in any plan that comes forward. And then the last thing regarding comments, we have collected those over this last month during that collection period. We at least initially have forwarded them, because there were some EAW comments, as Derek pointed out, mixed in with personal concerns of the expansion of the park. And so that gave them a chance to sort those out. We are in the process of putting a book together of all of those comments that'll be given to all of you, will be given to the planning commission for the public hearing when we get to that proposal of what's being laid out. And then there'll be a couple of public copies here, one at City Hall and one at the library, that'll eventually be available for the public to look at too. Before, as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, any big decisions move forwards.
Do you have a mind where all your questions answered?
Mm-hmm.
Josh?
Yeah, I don't have any right now.
Ben?
Yep, good.
Well, we need a motion, the approval of Resolution 2019, a resolution making a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the proposed Southern Hills development. Move from one way or the other.
I'll move, I'll make the motion for the negative declaration on need for the environmental impact statement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also curious.
So when does that meeting take place that you're talking about, in public?
Wed- Wednesday, November sixth, it'll be at the Civic Center at six o'clock PM. One thing I did forget to add, we did forward any of the school questions or comments over to the superintendent. So she and their board can be looking at those kind of questions that came up from citizens and things, because they'll have to address those things as it deals with growth.
Derek, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just want to clarify, so part of the response to comments does include republishing the comments received. We did consult with the state because some of them were not necessarily submitted specific to the EAW, some of them are also more personal in nature. The state agrees it's not prudent to just publish anything received without it being specific to it. So what you have in there for the comments are only the state agency ones, as Bill has identified already, the responses that were submitted have been assembled reviews at the local level. We didn't feel it was appropriate to publish them statewide for public consumption, it's really a local issue at this point. So I just want to clarify. We're not republishing everything, but they are certainly still part of the administrative record. I certainly want to note that the number of residents in the agencies that commented, agency-wise, is fairly typical, resident commentary, whether it's specific to the EAW or not, was much higher than usual. So I certainly want to acknowledge this part of the process and having this completed allows you to move forward with a lot more decision-making capacity. I know it took time and energy to get to this point, but hopefully prepare for whatever happens in the future.
Derek, we thank you for your time and input on this too.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks. All right, that takes us to our next item under general business, which will be Homestead County Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Contracts for 2020-21. Homestead County has provided us, Sheriff, with the 2020-21 law enforcement contracts, the contract amounts for the city contract are $441,197, no increase for 2020. And $449,152, a two percent increase for 2021. The cops' contract is $109,017, no increase for 2020. And $112,228, a three percent increase for 2021. These contracts were included in the preliminary budget, with council approved at the September twenty-fifth meeting. Sheriff Ferguson, why don't you take it from there?
All right, the numbers are what they are. The, like, question that may come up, I'll just try to answer a few of them, and if you have other questions, Chief Deputy Bledsky and I are here to answer them. The, the increase, there's zero increases, you know it in there in the first year on both contracts. And then the second year for the four deputy contract, the main contract, is a two percent increase, and then for the cops officer, cops deputy position, three percent increase. What we do and what we've been doing now for the last several years is getting to a point where we're, we're taking and what we're using is the average of where our current patrol division deputies' wages are. So the highest-paid deputy, not the sergeants, but highest-paid deputy to the newest, lowest-paid deputy, and all our deputies in our office start, when they get hired with us, they start in the patrol division. So the average wage that is just their salary is that $112,288 that you see, that you see, and then if you divide the, as you see for the 2020 contract. In the 2020 contract, the $449,152 is divided by four, is also $112,288. So that's where the numbers are. When we come back to you again in two years, that's, that's our plan, that's our standing position at this point, is continue doing just that, the average of what that patrol division is. Maybe it will be different, I can't, you know, predict what it's gonna be, but that's what we've been doing, we feel that's the fairest. The other item that is important for you to know and everyone to be aware of is that the county picks up, or the sheriff's office covers all of the indirect costs, which is all the other things that the deputies do to be able to do their job, you know, from the wear on the car, to drive, and the equipment that's in it, and all the other stuff that goes along behind the scenes is, on the average again, is right now, I figure that's excepting the $70,217 a year. So the county has picked out that portion of that for the deputies' contracts, as far as those indirect costs. That's what I have. Any other questions?
Questions up here? Josh?
No, I don't have any. I have a question.
Right.
Can you tell us, since, how many hours a week or month is the county, I'm sure you guys have county patrol cars, not the ones assigned to Stewartville? You guys have cars roaming or whatever, how many hours a month are they in town, or a week? Is there a set, is there a set schedule, you guys go between Rochester, Byer, and Stewartville? And how many cars a day, I mean, do you have two roaming cars or county cars that cover the county?
Depends on who's on vacation or, or, you know, whatever, do you train?
I'm just curious, like, what's the, I mean, is there an average per week or month that, that, where that's any city in Homestead County is, gets a deputy on the county side, not the city contract?
Each city is different, so Stewartville, the twenty-four-seven, sixty-five contract.
But I, no, I understand that, but I'm asking on the county, on the county side, Mike, what are those cars called? I think I've asked you.
They're our, our.
Power cars.
What?
Or power cars.
Power cars. Yeah, I'm wondering how often the power cars are in town a day, is it daily, weekly, or monthly, I mean, how do you guys figure that, or how many power cars a day do you have?
They come as they, as, as needed, and that's one of the things that we've actually been starting to look at, is, is that extra cost, I wonder the extra hours that they come here. What we've done, we've done since the time when I started, back in nineteen eighty-six, when you got done with your shift, whatever contract you were working, you had to log down how many hours you spent in that village, and if you were the, at that time, we didn't initially have power cars, later we had power cars. So if a power car were to come down here and back up to Stewartville deputy, in a domestic, or a crash, or whatever, spend time down here, or Summerfest, or something like that, and they would log those extra hours in. We can get you those numbers.
I was just curious, I didn't know if you guys had like a set, if you guys have two power cars on every shift, and, you know, they hit every town for like at least an hour or two, I didn't know if there's any set schedule or.
The deputy that's assigned here, they're, they're the ones that have the primary responsibility to get those hours in.
No, I understand that, but I just, I was just wondering, the power cars, if, since we're all paying county taxes, often they're here also?
The power car, that's part of the reason we had the power cars.
Yep.
For everybody that, don't know what a power car is, power car, we, we have generally, there may be an early power that comes in from, at ten and works until our shift to ten PM. Generally, there's afternoon shifts, they might start at two in the afternoon, go up to AM. So when there is that transition between our primary shifts, which is the six AM, the six PM, the six PM, the six AM, those, those power shift cars, especially at that six PM switch-over period, that was, you know, five-thirty to seven-ish, you know, when the cars are leaving, and there's turning reports, and stuff's going back and forth, and then the power cars are sliding down here, that's, was my gig for several years, was the power car. And that was my primary responsibility, when I knew that the Stewartville car was leaving to go back to the city to turn off, or turn the reports or whatever, my responsibility is to come here. So those, those hours are accounted for as well.
I just didn't know if there's a set, if there's a set, like.
Well, the goal is to get twenty-four hours in a day, and generally, what you see is way more than that. And then those, you know, calls are coming in, and they're taking the calls, so if you want the hours, be considered.
No, I, I was just curious, on a county level, how you guys do it with the power cars, I guess.
That's ours, that's ours.
If you're curious about the power cars, I mean, they're, they're not assigned anywhere, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know, if they, if they say, if someone asks us in town about the county cars, we say, no, they're here four hours, if they're here four hours a week, or two hours a day, that's all I was getting at, is if there's a, if there's a set, if there's a set time limit on the power cars, the county car, the county cars hit each city in the county.
You're kind of, they're all county cars, okay?
No, I understand.
So we don't have just specific county cars, we have cars assigned to areas, and so the cars that we have that are not assigned to villages, which I think is what you're referring to.
Yep.
Are not assigned anywhere, so if there's calls in Stewartville, they will come here. But no, we don't say they have to go put so many hours in each town.
Okay.
They're free to roam, they're, they have nowhere that they're assigned to, they come here as needed, which is a lot. We, we spend a lot of time with those cars here in Stewartville, they went home. We had four cars here from four o'clock until six, seven o'clock, because of the call volume that's happening, so, but they're not assigned.
Yeah, I mean, I see, I mean, I'm on the fire department, so I see multiple cars here for, for calls, I mean, I was just curious, because people ask, and I.
It's fluid, but they, they will cover that, that period of time in there too, if there's a known gap, somebody's gonna cover, and try to make sure that we keep that, that promise by contract, and you will sense that they're covering those four hours a day as, as the contract requests.
Bill?
Couple of concerns we did get over the last term was, you know, response time, and obviously we did hang up on a call or a longer call than normal. But a couple of citizens had asked about when there's a shift change. Can the shifts be staggered in such a way that the, the new shift person gets here before the other one gets off? So that that coverage stays like a seven, twenty-four-seven.
Then, then it's overtime. That's what I was just trying to describe, is especially in the evening when it is really busier. You could argue that Main Street is pretty busy at six AM in the morning, or.
Yeah.
But the primary times when there are actual calls and things that are happening, people are more on the boat other than just driving through town, that's where the power shift, that's the reason why the power adds power to your, your force, in a sense, to provide that service. If we know of something, if there is something that's happening, you know, that's not unusual for us to, to calling people early to cover as things are happening. If there's another call that's happening in town, there's other, you know, that's requiring a number of deputies, that there's foreman, some seen handling something that was quite serious. We're not against, and we do it quite regularly, that's why we have the assigned car policy, or the call technical car policy. We've got deputies live here in Stewartville, and we call them up and say, you're on the road, you're covering Stewartville, until we get this call taken care of. So there's, there's all kinds of ways that the contracts are satisfied or, or we cover during those, those times, and require a little extra attention.
And, you know, from a citizen's standpoint, they think of, okay, if you have to run back to law enforcement center, that's what, fifteen minutes maybe? Then the next person, fifteen, there's a half hour maybe, that is a cover.
Right, and then that's, that's where, that's where the, like you said, that's where the power shift cars are, those are also that. And then keep in mind, when that's happening, if there is a situation, as we have deputies, again, like I said, we have deputies that, you know, when they come in service, they come in from all, and there's several of them that live right here in town, or very close to town. Again, if there is something that's happening, and that's Stewartville cars on their way up, or they're already in the government center in Rochester. We're not against even though that new deputy coming on service, in service for his, his shift, and he's down here, and there's a call here, he's gonna take a call, myself included, I'm expecting himself. That just handled a crash this morning on the bridge out here, as I was pulling in, another deputy who was right by me, who also was coming in service, and we didn't use the Stewartville car at all, it was us that handled the call, until the state patrol back there. So that's, again, part of the, the benefit of having the take-home car, assigned car policy that we've had for so many years as well. So that we are covering, we are sensitive to those times when there could perceptionally be a gap, or is a gap.
Yeah, because you take it.
Again, we're very aware of that.
Two or three shifts, that if people are thinking half hour on each of those three shift changes, now that's an hour and a half, you know, and so. That's why I'm glad you're explaining that.
Well, you might want to look at, you know, the contract too, it calls for four forty-hour deputies, it doesn't call for twenty-four-seven, but that's what you get. So actually, your contract calls for a hundred and sixty hours, and you're getting a hundred and sixty-eight, when we do it the way I do. And in your cops' contract, it says you'll pay his overtime, we've never charged for the overtime from the cops.
Well, Mike would never charge us overtime, he loves this.
But we've never charged back that overtime from his position, even though your contract says that you will pay his overtime.
And again, we know that by that kind of give and take, you know, he has specialty assignments, he's a SWAT team guy, and the next person is gonna have other specialty needs that are training and other things. So we know that there is those kind of things that we have to give and take on, otherwise we couldn't do what we need to do. We're very sensitive to, to the needs as much as we can, and when there's an issue, please call a call, you know where I live. You know, we'll do whatever we can to keep this community as safe as we can, as much as respond to the rest of the county.
Great, do you have anything? Well, I got a question. Don't look at me like that. I hear we're gonna be losing Mike shortly, you got something you can fill in?
Yeah, we do, I think we could probably, have we named it internally? I don't think we did yet.
Because he's a big spot to fill, he's done an excellent job, I'll have you know while he's been here.
Very aware of that, thank you very much, and I do, we do know who it's gonna be, like you said.
They did announce it, sure.
Oh, we did announce it, yeah, we've got so many people over different places. But the next deputy is, I don't remember how many years he's got on, but he's got a lot of years on, and he's gonna step in and do a very good job. So you said he announced it internally?
Yes.
Did he announce it publicly? I don't know if he did today. You did.
Do you guys, is that, you guys, you guys, or, I mean.
I don't even hear it say.
Mike asked leave, or how's that work with you guys, since he's been here?
Well, his rotation is gonna be up early next year, but he's taking a leave, because he has a young child at home. So his leave time is gonna be right up to or around the time that he would normally be expected to leave. So we're gonna replace him in, you know, whenever that time starts, I'm sure we were just talking about it over here, for you, what the time was, I was kind of anticipating that question. So sometime we think in December, and so before that, very likely November, that deputy will start working side by side and meeting everyone and all of that. So I guess, might as well name it, his name is Jason Owen, you probably know the guy.
Well, I'm going with it.
There you go. So.
He'll try and outrun him.
Yeah, so he'll, he'll start working side by side with Mike sometime in the near future, once we know exactly what date.
Excellent.
He's gonna take his leave, and again, Jason has got a lot of experience, very sharp fellow.
Hey, he's been on quite a while, hasn't he?
He's been around, it's gotta be more than ten years, maybe fourteen, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't keep track of all.
I don't, it's hard to keep track.
I'll have to look back, I don't know if I got a ticket from him or not.
I'll be knowing he didn't outrun him, that's always cool.
From the public work side, I'd like to say thanks to Mike, and while you guys are here.
From the public works side, I'd like to say thanks to Mike and while you guys are here.
Yeah, thank you.
He's been great to work with us.
Yes, he has.
The stretch that he's been here and all this and down here.
And that's been, I know the other, you know, previous years, since the program started, the cops' position started, it's been one of the, and we, we have the same conversation in our other cities too, is, you know, they, you know. Not that we should say that there's a bad deputy, because if there's a bad deputy, we don't want him in the office. So they all shouldn't be capable of doing the job, but, um, we do know, um, how important it is in that relationship that you, you all have and need. And so, uh, you know, you and Mike came down here and I was, I was going to do it right and we're happy here that he has. So appreciate it and it goes to him and I fully expect Jason to do, um, the same. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now I suppose we're out of motion here. If you have a nice business, you better, uh, either renew the contracts or not. Approve of the twenty twenty, twenty-one law enforcement service agreements, please the city of Stewartville, Homestead County, and the community ordinance policing officer agreement. Do we have a motion to approve, motion to approve, McCray? Second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you. I have to run. I have another agenda yet to get to it.
Thank you.
Handout certificates. So appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next item. Looks like, uh, snow hauling contract. City of Stewartville has advertised snow hauling bids for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty snow season. We have received two bids back and are recommending Steve Yegi truck service. Uh, Yegi truck service was seventy-nine dollars an hour. Bruce Bucknell was at eighty-five dollars an hour. Action would be to award the snow co- hauling contract to Steve Yegi truck service. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That will move us to the next general business item, library personnel request. Library director decree has recommended to the personnel committee and they have concurred to promoting Sue Edge from library position to library associate position at pay grade eight. Library director decree has conducted phone interviews with seven applicants and four in-person interviews. He has recommended to personnel committee and they have concurred to hire Sarah.
Schrammick.
Schra- Schrammick?
Schrammick.
Schrammick for the part-time twenty-hour-a-week library aid position, pay grade four. Uh, council action requested would be to approve recommendation. Bill?
Oh, um, can you just table the first one? Um, Nate and I just want to review a couple of things on requirements and responsibilities. And then still go ahead with the aid. And you might see this all come back just the way it is, but we're just going to take another look see here at the.
Council action requested is to approve the recommendation to hire Sarah as library aide. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Public Works Department Personnel Request. This past year, the personnel committee has been reviewing the public works organization chart and recommended approved during the budget workshop. Implementing a job description for an in-house lead mechanic position. The council also agreed to keeping a mowing employee on board for the remainder of the year as part-time twenty hours a week custodian. We're keeping him on to free up a maintenance one position, which they're also recommending to continue. Personnel committee is recommending the approval of the following. New position, part-time permanent custodian position. End advertising. Is that correct?
Yes.
Twenty hours a week, pay grade six, fifteen dollars thirty-eight cents to nineteen ninety-nine dollar. Number two would be a new position, lead mechanic in in-house advertising, pay grade ten. Number three would be current position, maintenance one in in-house advertising, pay grade seven. Council action requested would be approval of the recommendations of the personnel committee outlined above. Questions or comments or discussion?
So two and three is, that's in-house advertising is for current employees?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will carry. Next item. Twenty nineteen, Tenth Street Northwest Water Main Project. We would like to set the assessment hearing for the twenty nineteen, Tenth Street Northwest Water Main Project. First resolution needed is to declare the cost in order preparation of the assessments for the twenty nineteen, Tenth Street Northwest Water Main Project. Total cost of the improvements and the city portion will be, and the cost to be assessed against prop owners is eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty and ninety-nine cents. The second resolution needed is to call the public hearing on the assessments. We are recommended the public hearing be held at city hall on November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen at the regular council meeting. So the action request would be two motions here adopt resolution declaring costs to be assessed in order in preparation of the proposed assessments. For in connection with the two thousand nineteen, Tenth Street Northwest Water Main Project. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will carry. Number two will be adopt resolution calling a hearing on assessments for the twenty nineteen, St- Tenth Street Northwest Water Main Project. A little motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. This is the last item in the general business. Resolution approving assessments, resolution for current services. According to Minnesota statute four, four, four point zero seven five subdivision three and four, two, nine point one oh one and city ordinance. The city council can assess for any unpaid charges for current services. These charges include utilities and cleaning of properties. Past practice has been charged the unpaid amount plus six percent interest plus the county recording fee of twenty-five dollars. The attached property owners have outstanding charges that have been notified of their past due amounts. Council action requested would be to approve resolution adopting special assessments for current services. We do have one question, I believe. Don't we rent or not? Our last Seabersons, is that we go to the estate for it, this we use?
It'll be assessed to the property if the estate hasn't paid it. So we sell when the property's sold.
That's kind of what I thought, but I want to clarify what he was asking. Any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing done. The action request would be approve resolution adopting special assessments for current services.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That will take us. Those mayor staff and consultant reports. We'll start with the mayor's report. City of Stewartville would like to send their sympathies out tonight to the families of Phyllis Beeman, Andrew Reese, Marion Bateman, Paul Wright, Janice Bushman, Paul Gekki, and Pat Himes. Don't forget about the chambers trick or treat, which is coming up. Check the star for the participating businesses who are offering treats on Halloween. City hall is also part of the, uh, giving out a special treats from one to five. And any council members who want to come dressed in black, they'll put dots on you so you look like dominos and you can hand out treats. I think that's the plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it's better than having a turtleneck on your back and walking around. Pheasants and habitat unlimited fall banquet is October twenty-fifth. You all will support them if you have the opportunity. Zion Church will be holding their fall fest. Please plan to attend their meatball lunch on November second. And November, November second is also the date to help out Lisa King at a benefit at the American Legion. Stop in there and lend your support. They'll be having food and silent auctions and different festivities. The Stewartville Fall Sports have had just an outstanding season this year with their soccer, tennis, volleyball and football. Right now our football team is seven and oh. Tonight is the first night of playoffs. They got to buy because they are number one. So they'll be playing Saturday, the winner, uh.
PM and.
Okay, we can take either one. It doesn't matter. They've had just an outstanding seven oh season and I hope their, uh, success continues on all the way through the game. There are many other groups offering special trick or treat parties. Keep your eye out, your ears out for them. We all wish you at this table that you have a spooktacular Halloween. That's all I got. That takes us on the city administrator's report.
Uh, the only thing I have is the last two weeks have just been our projects and hopefully trying to get those wrapped up before winter sets in. So your report just includes pictures and, uh, with my able-bodied assistants over here of Sean Hale and Jenna Obernolte. They'll give you the rundown on the projects, but, um, gives you an idea of what's been accomplished at each of those sites.
That picture, that first one, the amphitheater really doesn't do it justice.
Right. You really should see it.
Well, you think Sean, it looks just kind of, it doesn't look like it does when you're there.
Yeah.
We'll stand up on the top flank, look down there.
Yep. I wish it made just one more little bump off somewhere I could stand on so I could still see above people up there.
We, uh, are drilling holes out there tomorrow and setting posts, so.
Oh, are you?
If, if we can wade through it.
Good. Any other questions for Administrator Schimmel? I see that looks like that, have they got all the culvert laid out there behind the homes across from current? All that culvert's in?
Yep, culvert's all in. Uh, just got some, there's some reshaping a little bit that I feel needs to be done, so we'll be shaping, fine tuning it, but again, weather.
Yeah, great. All right. Any questions for Bill? Hearing done. Thank you. We'll take us to finance director Carla. Do you have a report tonight?
No, I do not. All is well.
Oh, he smokes. Things are really going all right. Public Works. Sean, we'll go back to questioning you though.
Uh, and you covered a couple of the ones that I would touch on. Other than that, it's been a long meeting. I'm sure Craig wants to go play pool tips. Get to work in the morning.
Cornered by strikers is still kind of off the get through.
You didn't clean up. I could have just figured that out for two weeks. That takes a good three or four minutes out of my gambling time. Times every day.
Add up the K season back.
All right. No other questions for Sean? Thanks you guys for slugging it through the mud as long as you have here and getting stuff done. Uh, wastewater report is in there. Any questions on that? City engineer report. Jenna, you got any for us?
Um, with this year's C I P, they are weather depending, hopeful to complete all concrete work this week and pave next week. So still hoping that weather dependent, everything will be completed by the end of next week.
Really?
That is the update we got this morning. So, but we all know how the weather can take us for a turn.
Yeah.
Um, in addition to that, I had a meeting with Cheryl, Bill and Sean last week. And came to the conclusion that, um, we've, we have enough on our plate that I'm going to start some office hours down here. So Tuesday mornings, I'll be down here working on Stewartville stuff. Um, that I would normally be willing to you anyway, but with all the developments going on and our projects going on. It just allows for a little more face-to-face time with staff, um, and better abilities to work through some of the things that we need to work through. So.
So I dig it. This is now I get put in the furniture.
Well, thanks for offering. I was not even going to go there, but. Thank you.
Time I get settled in somewhere.
We'll have those long horns moved by. I'm pretty flexible of where I could work.
Her and Joy will kind of alternate between the conference room and that other office.
Thank you. Good. Any questions for the engineer? Jeremiah, how's everything up at your place? Any engineer questions? No, all right.
Mother nature questions?
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for Sean. Where, where are we at on cutting trees down?
We are not going forward with any of them that aren't over forty percent diebacked. If they're forty percent dieback, we all kind of agreed that they were the point. We were going to take them down because they're not savable. If they're not to that point and people are treating them, we're not doing anything until the ordinance is done. Some private people want to take some of their own down.
That's how I was getting at.
And they're going to take them down and that's.
Some private people want them down, want theirs down.
Yeah. And we're not taking any of them down ourselves unless they're to that dieback point. But if they want to take them down themselves, they're.
More than often do.
So.
I told them to call you. That's what I did. So I'm sure you got a couple of phone calls.
I had one person talk to me.
George Shaw?
Yep. So if, if they want to take their trees down, then, then we, they can take theirs down.
No, if anybody up in that area knows the pig running room, let me know how old's it is.
We will not take any down on our, ourselves unless they are to that forty percent though, where they become a hazard. And they're non-savable. Everyone has agreed at that point. Uh, arborists have confirmed that, that once they're to that forty percent dieback, they're pretty much non-savable.
All right. Any other questions for engineer or Sean or Bill or Carla or me or Cheryl or? All right. We'll take us to Nate. Now we can question him. Library director's report?
Uh, beyond my report, uh, we had our book sale on Saturday.
Just a second. Yeah, the wait's undone with Nate. Let the staff get down in.
And, um, we grossed over four hundred and thirty-two dollars in sales and donations and sold over a thousand books. There were predominantly discards from our collection and, uh, I thought it was a pretty good event and dovetailed nicely with the flea market happening in town that weekend. Additionally, we had our pumpkin decorating this afternoon and had about fifty, somewhere between fifty and sixty people decorating over forty pumpkins today. So another nice little program for us.
Any questions for Nate? Would you rather wait till the open mic? When you can stand up?
There was this question about the trees.
Well, yeah, but you can ask us for four minutes up there then if you want.
Although I was just real, just, just saying key on the trees. I don't, I don't care if the trees are becoming out. But I have noticed a couple of kids already tripping over the stumps. Is that a plan to take care of the stumps or is that?
The stumps, yeah, we'll do the stump ship this fall. We, we generally wait till we get a few of them and then we put the stump right around and go and do them all at once.
And like I said, I wasn't going to ask, but then that was brought up and they're in our neighborhood. I just saw a couple of them right by over in one.
Well, maybe it's more. If you're open mic, you could, you realize that. Thanks again Nate for your report. No questions for Nate? That'll move us to no fire chief report, community commission board reports. Jamie Combs, any special coming up, Al or anything?
Uh, water festival, everybody's worried of itself, trick or treat.
How did the, uh, flea market weekend go for you guys?
Um, I, I heard they did good.
Good.
The sun's, the little rain held off a little bit in the morning Saturday, but, yeah, it was well.
All right, good to hear. E D A H R A?
Nothing very important.
Not yet. Finance?
Nothing.
Library?
I think we meet next month. Yep.
Backup wants to second finance. Carla, you calling any finance meetings yet or anything or?
No, no meetings out.
All right. Park board?
Nothing.
Personnel?
Meetings in there and we pretty much approved everything we talked about already.
Yep. Plan zoning?
Meeting next month.
And meetings about the fifteenth or anything, I believe?
That's the personnel.
Oh, okay. Public safety. Mike? You got some last big speech coming right up for?
I'll save it.
Okay.
You want to hit the gavel? For your last day too, or?
So nothing tonight, Mike?
No.
Public Works? Ready?
No report?
R O C O.
No report.
Stu one eighty? No report. Transit advisory committee?
Nope. Dan talked to me today and he's got nothing yet, so.
Okay. Under communications, you got a Min dot sixty-three speed limit release in there. Housing workforce is in there. We had a, well, we did have that little update from, uh, Min dot out there, D D A meeting on the stoplights or the, not so much stoplights, the work on ninety coming up. So.
They'll have some flyers available.
There'll be some flyers all the way.
Yeah, they're using them up out at Fairway now in the grocery bags. And then once those are used up, she said that we'll, uh, give half a pile here and half a pile at the library.
Because there will be a website on there or a place where you can send your email and they'll send you updates if you want to update every day on what they're doing out there or whatever. So when we get them, we'll let you know. Open mic. City council welcomes and encourages participation from the community members. Please be, please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business. They must adhere to the data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not. They must adhere to the data privacy rules, no employee's name may be used, please don't expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also would request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up the podium and state your name and address. It's an opportunity for anyone sitting there. Motion to adjourn. Oh, we got a motion to adjourn, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.